We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So Brad, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did flip it yesterday. Alright, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead with roll call.
Briann Dedrickson, Board Member.
Jake Colette, Board Member.
Kim Dickerson, Board Member.
Paul Swett, Superintendent.
Corey Holmes, Board Member.
Brad Ellert, Board Member.
Jason Watt, Business Administrator.
Okay, so we'll get started with our first item of business, which is our public budget hearing. And I will turn the time over to Business Administrator, Dr. Watts.
Awesome, thank you. Well, this is the moment you've all been waiting for. The time where we go over with some detail, a proposed budget for fiscal year 26, for the year ending June 30th, 2026, and talk about the current budget as well. Just maybe just a couple of notes about school budgets and about fund budgeting that school districts use. The vast majority of the district's budget is in what we call the general fund. The general fund includes the every cost to operate schools and the district. So that's includes the bus drivers and the maintenance. It includes the light bill. It includes all the salaries and benefits of everybody in the district, with the exception of the food service folks that are in the food service fund. So on the left of this side, on this screen, and maybe, hopefully you can see that okay, are the different funds that the board is responsible for and that the district receives and expends money in. So the general fund is by far the largest fund. And it is, by the way, the best way for the public to track what is happening in the school district is by looking at the general fund expenditures, and we'll get to their expenditures in a minute. The reason being is, is many of the other funds, well, let me just go through them. The Student Activity Fund, for instance, is all of the money that is received and expended by schools, by the schools themselves. And so the biggest player in that, of course, is the high school that would receive and expend a lot of money through there, but also all the elementaries. All the school funds are accounted for in the Student Activity Fund. The Tax Increment Fund is simply the amount of local property taxes that are assessed for charter schools. That's not a fund that this board has any responsibility for. In fact, that money doesn't even hit our accounts. It's assessed by the county, sent to the state, but we account for it. And so that's the Tax Increment Fund. The Debt Service Fund is the amount that the board, this is the fund that they use to pay their general obligation bonds. So we have one set of general obligation bonds, which is for the project that was Daniels Canyon Elementary, Timpanogus Middle School, and the Aquatic Center. We have eleven, about eleven years left on that bond, if I remember that right. And so that's in the Debt Service Fund, or Fund. The Capital Fund is one of the most variable funds because it can be, you know, this year you'll see a significant increase in the Capital Fund because of what we're doing, building a new high school, right? And so all of the expenses related to building the new high school are projected in, and counted in the Capital Fund. Some years ago, some will remember that we showed a lot of revenue in the Capital Fund, and specifically in the local building authority portion of that, when we sold the lease revenue bonds. And so that revenue has already been recorded, and now the expenditures are just, are coming through. The Food Services Fund is, as you would think, all the costs associated with providing meals for the students. And the Foundation Fund is the activity of the School District Foundation. So really, the board specifically has responsibility for all these. But the General Fund and the Capital Fund are the main ones that the board will have, will, would set rates for, would receive tax revenue for, and would, and will spend most of our time talking about those today. The, you see here a list of the revenues and the expenditures. In the General Fund and the expenditures now, you'll see that our FY25 amount of 114,813,000, we're proposing to increase to 124,590,000. As I said, this is the place where you can best see what is happening in the school district. The, that is an increase of just over 9.7 million dollars. And 8.7 million of that is going directly to salaries and benefits for district employees. And that, a portion of that is a negotiated raise that the board is, will approve tonight. And a part of that is some additional money that the state is offering to teachers and educational support professionals as well, as part of, as part of the legislative session. Wasatch is one of the best districts in the state as measured by the percent of our general fund that is used for instructional purposes. Each of our expenditures is also given a function code that says, is this for instruction? Or are these for support services? And so instructional, as you might think, is everything that happens inside a classroom. So all teacher salaries, supplies for the classroom, it's aides, it's all the special educators. But it is not the counselors, or the nurses, or the administrators, or the mental health professionals, or the maintenance people, or the custodial staff. Those are all classified as, as support services. And so we have over 72%, 72.6% of our proposed budget that goes directly to instructional services for our, for our students. We'll get into some charts and graphs that might help us see this a little bit more. We are, today, the board will be considering two actions, really. One is to approve the FY26 budget, and the other two is to amend, if necessary, budgets for FY25. And we will only be amending, proposing to amend, two budgets for FY25. And that is the Tax Increment Budget. Again, the, we collected a little bit more from the Tax Increment than we projected last year, just because probably something as simple as more people paid their tax bill than the county was planning on. And the foundation took in some additional revenue and thus expenditure as well. That means more scholarships for more kids. And so for the Capital Fund, the General Fund, the, all the other funds, we will come in under budget from last year, and thus will not need to amend any of those budgets, which is, which is good news. One of the things that we look for is that we can, we can strive to stay under any budgeting amounts that, that the board sets in June. That being said, it's a tricky, it's a little bit of a tricky business to, to do school budgeting. We are working on projected revenues and projected expenditures when we budget out for a full year. For instance, we, the state, the county is still working on the process that we believe will be really beneficial, the new process they're going through of evaluating homes, setting the certified tax rate. And so we don't know yet exactly what our revenues will be for the next year. We can project them, and we do that in a budget, and we project them in a way that we believe that is conservative and will make sure that we can come in under budget. But we are projecting what our revenues will be, and also projecting what our expenditures can be. But because, you know, 90% of our expenditures in the General Fund are salaries and benefits, we can get pretty close to our expenditures as we, as we project those out. And by the way, if the board has any questions about any of this as we're going on, please feel free. We will have some time to hear from the public and answer some other questions as well. But if you, if you keep going down to the bottom of this now, this is, these are the General Fund expenditures. You can see that 59.5 of those are from salaries, 30.1% from, from benefits. So 89.6% of the, of the benefits in the General Fund are to salaries and benefits of employees. This board and previous boards have prioritized this as a means of ensuring that our students are, are surrounded by the best people that we can find to be their teachers, to be their counselors, to be their administrators. And it's paid dividends, both in the results that we are receiving academically and in our ability to attract and retain really high quality, high quality people. The remaining amount of the, the increase, you can, you can pretty much put in the supplies, it says supplies slash textbooks, about a, just over a $1 million increase there. That's a little bit misleading because that also includes things like the cost to heat the building, like the light bill is in there. So about $400,000 of that is a projected increase in our costs of utilities for next year. So that's where a lot of, a lot of the additional increase that comes from, in the General Fund is for, for things like that. We'll just kind of go through some of our, our, our revenues a little more closely. You can see that in the, the 66% this year of the, of the school district's budget will, is projected to come through local tax proceeds. That number is increasing over the years, although the FY25 amount, once, once we have our audit in October, in September, October, that will likely come up a little bit when we can finalize the FY25 numbers. But, but our, our, we are really grateful to the citizens of this community who, who make what we're doing in the school district possible. And the state, the state revenues are, are becoming a little bit lower. Some of that is due to some of our, some of our enrollment in our online school specifically. Some of those students are electing to use other state funds, like the Utah Fitzhall Scholarship. And so we have lost some enrollment in our online program. Our other, our resident students have maintained, that enrollment has been pretty flat at the middle and elementary schools, and is still increasing at the high school level. Our project, our federal revenues, you might, as you might know, we're, you know, we're not exactly sure what's going to happen with federal revenue. Right now, all that money is still flowing to the states, and they, they predict that that will continue. So we're projecting to receive similar federal revenues as we, as we have in the past. This is just a visual representation of those, of those numbers that we just, that we just went over. These are total revenue numbers. Again, this is, this, this will change a little bit once we have our audited numbers for fiscal year 25. And, and we believe that will, that will look closer, closer to what the, the current bar, the fiscal year 26 one will look. But you can see the numbers for tax proceeds and other revenues, state revenues and federal revenues. If we, if we, if we go now to expenditures for total expenditures, you can see the bottom bar in this, is the, that's the, the, the blue, the dark one here. This is for the, the General Fund. And you can see that it's kind of just ticked up at a pretty predictable pace with the, with the raises that the board has, has given to teachers recently. The big difference, the big jump here, and, and the reason why our expenditures look so much more for this year is a significant increase in our capital budget. And this again, this is the year where we'll be completing the high school. We'll be paying for all of the furniture fixtures and equipment that go in that high school. All of the supplies and things that will, that will go into the classroom. So this will be a big year for our Capital Fund. The, the board has prioritized that. We have sufficient revenues in the Capital Fund to pay for those. Some of that expenditure will be the remaining lease revenue bond funds that we have, and the rest will be part of our, our, our existing capital fund and fund balance. Part of that is also the payment that we have and will make on the high school, the new high school. We finished paying off the existing Wasatch High School two years, a year and a half ago. This will be our second payment next year on the new high school. This shows you just kind of a little breakdown of what the instructional costs have been versus the support services. These are, the instructional ones increasing a little bit more rapidly than the support one, just because of the number of teachers that are involved in the instruction of the kids. And, and again, this is just a, a graphic representation of the same, of the same thing. This one will, again, show you, this will show you the General Fund expenditures for salaries, benefits versus the other services that we, we offer. We don't, we, we, we spend, we, we, our, our equipment, supplies, textbooks, purchase services, all of those have been pretty flat and consistent over the years. Again, it's showing you the percentages of our salaries or our budget that's spent on our personnel. And it makes sense that we would do that. We are, you know, our, our, our biggest resource is obviously our people. And so the, when people ask what, you know, really, how do we, how do you move the school district budget, either up or down, really, there's almost just one answer, and it's, and it's personnel, and it's salaries and benefits. I mean, everything else would, would have a very minuscule effect, although we, we certainly budget for every penny and ensure that everything is, is considered when we're, when we're making expenditures. The proposed increase in fiscal year 2026, so the board knows, represents an 8.5% increase to the, to the total General Fund budget. And like I said, 90% of that is for salaries and benefits for our personnel. One last thing I want to show, this is, this is a way that I use and the board has used in the past to just kind of see how we compare with, with our fund balances. So this is a chart that lists how much fund balance in the General Fund each district has as a percentage of their General Fund revenues. And so of the 41 school district, we are, we rank 21%, or sorry, we rank 21st, so we're right smack in the middle of, of, of how much fund balance we have. Again, the fund balance is, is tricky because we want to be prepared to be able to continue to operate in the light of something unexpected. But at the same time, we don't, you know, we don't want or need to have, you know, limit, unlimited money, obviously, in the, in the fund balance. So the board knows that, you know, that $40 million would, would, would be about four months of payroll for, for the school district. And so, again, that's, that, as long as we're kind of in the middle of this, I feel like we're in a good spot. And then the board can reassess this as that moves, as we, as we continue on through the, through the years. That is all the presentation I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has, or we can go to our public comment.
No questions?
No questions?
Jason, I just, one thing. If we were to look back, our capital expenditures has gone up quite a bit, but our debt service fund has gone down.
Yes.
Correct? Because we, we paid a bond off normally, normally to pay for the new high school, you would have had, you would have been paying that out of the debt service.
Right.
Which would have kept that higher.
Right.
Because it's being paid out of the capital, that's why the debt service has gone down so much.
That's right.
And the capital's gone up.
Exactly. The debt service was in the 12, 13, 14 million dollar range for a time. The board strategically used that money after it paid off the new high school, or sorry, the existing high school. They used that money then, that they no longer had to use for that, to pay for the existing high school. That had to transfer from the debt service to the capital in order for us to pay, you pay lease revenue bonds from the Capital Fund. And so that, that for the, for the taxpayers was, was moving it from the debt service to the capital.
Which is why our debt service went from 13 million to like 4.1 or something.
That's right.
So if you go to the next slide, is that what the local other is on that line?
So the local other is a set of, is several things. It could be anything from interest we're earning on, on fund balances. It's also revenue, maybe that people are paying us for preschool. It's, it's, if we get revenue from BYU to help us pay for a position that's working with them, it goes, it's not state money, it's not federal, it goes in there. So that's where, that's, that's what most of those types of revenues are.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, thank you, Jason, Dr. Watt. We'll go ahead and open the floor for public comments. If anybody is interested in coming up here and speaking at the podium, you have two minutes per person. Oh, this is just for the budget hearing, so we'll have a, a public comment for the general meeting after we close the public hearing. Thank you. And please state your name and area, address, please.
My name is Jim Judd. I live on 670 South Mill Road, excuse me, in Heber. I'm also the principal of Timpanogus Middle School, and I wanted to just give a quick story. All of us principals just finished the hiring season. Hopefully, all the other principals are finished, and they're not still grappling for summer hires. So in this, I had, I was hiring some math teachers. And I've been, I've been hiring teachers for 23 years in Wasatch School District. And the dynamic has greatly changed where 20-plus years ago, the questions were more like, convince us why we should pick you. The tenor of interviews now are, you tell us why we should pick to come work for you, because we have a lot of offers. This particular math teacher had already had two offers from different schools in Utah County area. She's a, she's a UVU graduate, and I was the third interview that she was exploring. So fearing desperation that there's no way, I pretty much said, well, we would love for you to come and work with us. And she said, well, I've gotten, I've got an offer at Tempe View High School, and I've got an offer, I forget, at the other junior high in Alpine District. So she said, let me think about it. She calls me back the next day and says, I, I really want to come work with Wasatch. Is the job still available? And of course, I said yes. And then as I got to know her, asking her, so in your decision, what made the difference? So she said, well, I made two phone calls. I called a friend of mine that I went to college with, who had been off, who had been working in Wasatch for one year, and I called my university mentor. And my university mentor told me, if you get a chance to go to Wasatch, you take it immediately. Not only are they heads above in achievement, you're going to get the best pay and compensation that you're going to get anywhere around the area. And so that's the kind of stuff we're getting that translates to students because we're recruiting the best.
Thanks, thanks, Jim.
Jenna Horrocks, Wheeler Park neighborhood, under Briann. I just want to publicly thank the board and administration for taking care of teachers. We feel your love and appreciation, and in return, teachers are taking care of kids. We're the best in state. Amber, I love that you wore your shirt. I'm going to call you out. I wish I would have worn mine. We're doing amazing things in this district, and it's because we have high morale of teachers. Teachers are dedicated and working harder than they've ever worked before because they're getting compensated for their work. I'm also in a unique situation where I got to come to negotiations, and we had an amazing meeting. And then I was able to send out an email to all of our members of the things that were discussed. And within minutes, we got over 100 responses of, we work in the most amazing, unique district, and everyone is so proud to be part of the Wasatch way. So thank you for keeping teachers as a top priority. And I just want to thank Jason. Thank you for your presentation. That was amazing. It's so great to just see it so cut and dry. So thank you.
Thanks for sharing that, Jenna.
Duke de Stafano, 3050 Southfield Road. I'm in Briann's area. But I just wanted to also publicly thank the board and our district administrators for always being willing to support teachers and administrators in the, in the state. I have the opportunity to also work as an independent contractor for the Utah State Board of Education in the, with the Future Business Leaders of America, and interact with a lot of teachers and advisors and administrators from all across the state of Utah. And they're always very, I don't know if jealous is the right word, but that we're taken care of and that our board is willing to do what they need to for our students and for our teachers and our administrators. And so I'm always very grateful for that. I know in the CTE world, we were all a little bit nervous this year with the state legislature cutting some funding. But it's, it's exciting to see that here at Wasatch, we're going to still offer the exact same. opportunities to our students and to our teachers, and that that's the priority, is student learning and making sure that our students have what they need and our teachers have what they need so they can take care of the students. So thank you so much for your time, energy, and effort, and thank you for being willing to support students and teachers here in this community.
Thank you.
You know, while we're waiting for the next person to come up, one of the things that Board Member Eller just reminded me about is unfortunately, we don't always have no increase in our health insurance benefits like we, like we did last, you know, last year. This year, we had a nine percent increase in our health, the cost of our health insurance, which for the district is about one and a half million dollars. And whereas many districts have started to pass that cost on to educators, this board has chosen to continue to fully fund the cost of that for the teachers. And so in addition to the salary benefits, the, the ability to have an insurance package that is comprehensive and not high deductible is a really also a significant factor for teachers.
Kevin Rich. Kevin Rich, I live in Wheeler Park in Board Member Diedrickson's area.
What was that?
Uh, no, I just wanted to personally say thank you, like a personal thank you. I, I moved up here in twenty twenty-two, and I am so fortunate to be able to both, to, to be able to live in the community I work in. If it weren't for actions that the board has taken in supporting their teachers, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have that ability. It, it would be difficult to, to both have a family, work in Wasatch, and live in an outlying community like that would, that would really stretch. I want to thank the board so much for, for your vision and for your efforts in supporting your employees. A tremendous thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
These keeps, things keep coming to me because I'm like, duh, you should have said that. But one other thing that I want to make clear is that the board has budgeted this revenue. We are, the increase, the, the amount of the increase in, in the revenue will not require any sort of tax increase on our, on our public. This will all be done with existing revenue. In addition to the board has, has budgeted revenue to be able to open our new high school, again, without going to the public for additional revenue. Those, those needs are partially being met from the revenue that's coming in from the new homes that are being, that are being built. And so there will be no proposed, there will be no increase in anyone's tax because of this budget.
I want to comment real quick on Kevin's comments. It is important for us, for our teachers, to live in this community, and not everybody do. I mean, there are some that choose to live in other communities and, and they commute up here, and that's, that's our, you know, that's what they do. But, but when our teachers do live in this community, it, I've seen a lot of teachers come to activities, to games, to the, you know, the students' sports games or whatever the event is going on for them. And it shows like, wow, my teacher showed up for this and, and they care about me. It just shows that the teacher cares. So I, I've, I see that happening a lot because I attend a lot of the events, and we all do. And I think that's a common thing here, and I think it's important to the students.
Dave McNautin, Daniels Canyon. But I think we're winning, so Brienne, you got it.
I'm keeping score.
Keep the tally mark going, I like it. I, I'm also the principal of Daniels Canyon. I think what I'd like to share is we see all these huge numbers, and you start thinking, you know, how do we account or how are we held accountable? You know, just today, I had sent an email to my immediate supervisor asking about paying for a certain thing, and her response back was, no. And I'm, I'm like, what? And, but it forced me to go back and relook at what I was asking for, how much it was costing. Do I really need that many licenses, that sort of thing? And it's like, we see these huge numbers, and you think fourteen million, or ten million, or nine, or whatever, and you think, why did Stephanie Dishar care about an extra thousand dollars? And it's because we don't take any of this for granted. And so I want to thank you and let you know, we're doing our side, our part, in, in relooking at budgets all the time, relooking at how we're spending our money. And I think that's real important. And when I found out, just to kind of go along with what Jim says, when I found out that the teacher's going to get an increase this year, I have basically one brand-new teacher we've hired, completely leaving Sun, or the ski resort in Wyoming, where she was in that town, and saying, hey, good news, you know, I told you you were going to get around this much, they just increased it by five percent. You are coming to the best district in the state. And then she told me she's moving to the Sequoia Apartments, who have come to me as I've talked with them because they're in my boundary, and they give teachers, you know, a three hundred and forty-five dollar, they erase something when it comes to, you know, like the administrative fee. So there's just people in the community as well, businesses, places that are helping us so that our teachers can survive. So shout out to them, and again, thank you. I just cannot tell you what it's like to be in a district where you just feel like it's a whole team and everybody's there.
Thanks, Dave.
Good job, Steph.
Um, I'll just keep bringing it in for Brienne. Drew Camps-Wofford, I teach at the high school, and my brain is very scatterbrained because I start student government retreats. So bear with me as I have notes because I'm like mentally running a to-do list. But in my classroom, so I teach U.S. History to juniors, and then I also teach student government. In my classroom, I have a bunch of quotes to kind of help motivate the students to find their voices. And I have a quote that says, "Fight for, fight for the things you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you," by Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And one reason why I love this quote is because I hope that my students feel empowered. And I feel very grateful that you guys as a board continue to fight for the things that you care about, but you're also doing it in a way that is leading other people to follow you, meaning other districts, not just nationwide, or not just statewide, but also nationwide. And I think it's so cool as a teacher and as a parent and as a community member here, as I ask, as I am kind of a trifecta of those. So thank you for taking care of teachers so that teachers can then take care of your students. Thank you for taking teacher, taking care of teachers in salaries and insurance so that then we can go home and we can take care of our own families. And guys, I'm the worst stay-at-home mom. Like, I am so excited for retreat to start tomorrow because I'm like, oh. But I, my husband's an attorney, and I did not realize how offensive it would be to tell his managing partner at his law firm in Salt Lake that I actually, we reject their insurance because our insurance is better than theirs. And my husband was like, Drew, I'm going to be fired. And I'm like, it's fine, we'll be okay because of how great we're taken care of here. So thank you, and luckily he didn't get fired. But I do run away from that partner every time we're at a thing. Thank you so much for your efforts to be transparent, communicative, and supportive. I know that this is the best district, and I feel so grateful for your hard work and for your efforts, especially when they're hard and unpopular, they're seen and they are valued. This is, one of my favorite things about this district is that we're a whole student district. So we don't just care about test scores. Yes, those are important and those drive things, but the whole student is what, is what we care about. We care about not only how well they're doing academically and meeting those essential standards, but we also care about opportunities to connect and to be involved at all levels, from kindergarten all the way up to seniors in high school. And so thank you so much for taking care of all of the needs in the whole school, school district because all really does mean all. And I still consider it one of my greatest blessings that as a student teacher, when I was applying for jobs, I applied for some random job in Heber that I was never going to get because it truly is the best thing of my life. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Drew.
Adam Hagan, Timber Lakes, Kim Dickerson is my person. So want to get out there. I'm also the administrator over transportation. I want to thank the board for all they do for our support services, my bus drivers, my aides. I think there's been a conscientious effort the last few years to really make our support services feel just as important as our teachers are. And it's worked, and they do, and they know they're an integral part of our, of what we do on an everyday basis. So I wanted to thank you. A lot of school districts in the state and the country struggle to get bus drivers and aides. We're fortunate enough, we're doing okay right now. We have our moments, but people want to work here, people want to stay here, and they feel like they're important, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Adam.
I think part of that is the job you're doing there, Adam, so thanks.
My name's Ryan Brown, and unfortunately, none of you get to claim me. I live by three hundred yards in Summit County up in Woodland. But I'm still elated to be part of the Wasatch County School District. Each and every day, when I get up and I'm driving down from the Dam Overlook down into our community, I'm so grateful that I get to be part of this, that I get to touch the lives of our students, that I get to see them grow and achieve their dreams and be prepared to excel. And that doesn't happen without the support of each one of you. So thank you very much. I recently completed some hiring as well. I had two special ed vacancies. Special educators can, in many respects, write their own ticket wherever they go for. Like math teachers, they're very sought after, like all quality educators they are. And I was able to hire two from a very good pool from Park City. The day that we're drawing educators from Park City, that's often looked at as a good place to work, one of the best, I think that says something about what people are looking at and seeing, not only in the compensation, but even more importantly in many respects as it relates to the lives of our students, of what we're achieving and touching the future. And so I want to thank each of you on behalf of the teachers that I represent, that I work with at my school, for what you do to support us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dave Haywood. I live just above Mill Road. Appreciate the, the time. Is that your district? Okay, we got one. Appreciate the time and, and all the information that you've shared in this. And I, I come from a little bit different, I'm not connected to the school district like all the other comments. So I speak a little bit from what I've seen with some neighbors and even ourselves in, you know, in the last, since I moved to Heber in two thousand eighteen, our taxes have, property taxes have gone up considerably. Specifically for us, I've had a couple neighbors who were on fixed incomes that had to sell their houses because they couldn't keep up with the, the tax amounts. And so I know that you appreciate the taxpayers and, and respect and understand how difficult it can be, especially as, as taxpayers. And, you know, as I think about the insurance that you, you mentioned, in running a small business, we're struggling just to find ways to bring employees to, to, you know, do you go on the marketplace or the exchange for insurance? Do you, can employees contribute just some part so that an employer can afford it? I know there's a lot of small businesses out there that are, that are struggling, just like you, like you mentioned, for health insurance. And it is a credit that, that the, the school district employees don't have to pay any. But I don't, I don't necessarily think that's the reality that most businesses and people face that are funding the school district. So I, I just had, as we're looking at the, at the budget, a few questions, and I don't know if those could be answered or, or where the resources to look into those. But my, one question would just be, do you do comparison of the students, the, the spend per pupil at Wasatch County versus, School District versus other school districts? And, you know, where we sit on, on that amount? And are we above average, below average, about average? The other question would be where, if, you know, I've noticed that the percentage that the local taxes are paying has increased from fifty-nine percent to sixty-six percent. Where does that sit as compared to other school districts? And then also, does it look like we're going to be within budget for our, our high school build? You know, are we, are we coming in with, the budget might be a little early for that. And then the final question was related to, you know, as we look to the future for budgets, does the new high school require, you know, even more salaries and wages to, to make sure that, you know, two high schools can operate? And are we kind of, are we putting enough funds in reserve for those increased costs in the future? Thanks.
Thank you. Jason, do you, do you want to answer to any of that?
Sure, I can, I can ask, I can answer a lot of those. The, the tax effort, that's a, that's a measure that the, the state uses about where, you know, where, as a percentage of your valuation, what, what does your tax levy look like relative to others? And we're, we're, we're about, oh, man, I was, I can't, I could tell you exactly another time, but I was looking at that, and we're in the probably fifteen-ish range of the forty-one. There, there is a spend per pupil data somewhere, but it's not, we'd have to figure that manually. So, so, so we could, we could get you the, the specific amount for ours, but I have not seen any data on every, on everyone's. Also, the board has budgeted monies to open the new high school. And so there will be, obviously, the teachers will split, right? Half the teachers, theoretically, if, if half the kids go, half the teachers will go as well. But there will be an additional, you know, a whole new custodial staff. There will be additional salaries associated with the new high school. But we have budgeted money that we believe will cover that and not have to go to the, the plan right now is to not go to the public for any additional tax revenue.
And if you want to get deeper into your questions, Stacy can get your information, and we can, you know, we can do a phone call or in-person meeting with, to give you more information, if you'd like, okay?
Hi, my name's Bree Carter. I, I just live down the street aways, five eight eight east, five hundred north. Yeah. I just want to personally thank the board for their love and time and dedication and care for the teachers. My husband works at Rocky Mountain as a counselor, and I work at Wasatch as a science teacher. And I'm a newer teacher, even though I'm a little older. This is, this, I'm going into my third year. But I've worked for Wasatch District as a coach and with student success and different jobs. And as I, as I learned the culture and learned about the admin, from the top down, like the board, the admin, my faculty around me, and then of course, the students, it was a place that I wanted to be at more if I was going to help my family with our income and, and my profession. And I sought after a full-time teaching job because I wanted to be more involved in, in the high school and teaching and coaching these students. And I remember I was nervous to, to apply because my husband's in the school district, and it's, it's expensive, it's expensive to live here, and I didn't know if that was the right choice for me. And I have not ever regretted working for Wasatch and being a teacher. And I just get emotional because it's allowing me and my family to spend more time together. It's allowing my husband to not have to seek after multiple jobs along with teaching. And I'm just so grateful to do what I love and not feel at all remorse, guilt, anything, just complete pleasure and opportunity to work for this district, and I wouldn't want to go anywhere else. I'm so happy with it, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Bree.
I'm Olivia Hales, and I'm, live in Midway, I represent Midway. This is my, I just finished my twenty-sixth year of teaching, all in this district, twenty of those years at Midway. So I just wanted to tell you that I'm so grateful, I've always felt supported. That's why I've stayed in this district the entire time because I have always felt supported from our, our board. So thank you so much for all you do for us, and I also want to represent preschool. I know you don't have to support preschool the way you do, but in behalf of the preschool teachers, the three, three of us here tonight, we're so grateful for all you do for us. Jenna and I just finished our end-of-year assessments, and we were so excited about the progress our kids made. And that's just going to give them that extra boost when they move on to kindergarten and throughout the rest of their time here, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Don't feel left out, Jake. I think, I think the people in your district do love you. Oh, we have, no, not anymore.
He's from mine, he's from mine.
Get Jake so upset. So coming at Martin Briggs over in Wheeler Park, two perspectives. One, as a parent, my wife and I moved here in twenty fourteen when our oldest was just a few months old. And I was working at Park City School District at the time. And the, the thought was always like, hey, I've heard Wasatch is great to send your kids there. So Park City can be a solid Plan B if things at Wasatch don't work out. And my son started kindergarten, and that year we went through COVID and everything. It's just been so cool seeing the support. And my son started kindergarten and that year we went through COVID and everything. And it's just been so cool seeing the support from when we lived on the north side of town in Cory's area, um, at J R Smith. And then over to Daniels Canyon, just the support that our kids have gone all the way through. We've a, uh, our third son just, um, finished preschool and loved it. And I've been amazed, especially coming from Park City and seeing the inner workings as far as how we compensate people, particularly our preschool teachers. Um, that's been pretty sweet, um, the edge we have here in Wasatch to be able to support our, truly have real professionals helping our, even our preschoolers get that leg up when they start in, in kindergarten. And then the second part now is an employee. I just finished my first year working for Wasatch and it was fun. Um, I've, I, I don't mind a long commute. It's nice listening to my audiobooks. But being able to bike to work and have more time with my family truly has been the best career change I've ever made. Like I love my Park City people, but being here, being able to live and work in the same community has just been phenomenal. So thank you so much for all you guys do to support us.
Thanks. Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you so much for your comments and questions, Mr. Haywood. Appreciate it, truly. Again, if you want further information, we're happy to connect with you and, and get whatever you need, okay? And thank you for all the positive comments. And we just want you to know, we appreciate you so much. We really do appreciate our community. So with that, we will go ahead and adjourn the budget part, part of our meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we will adjourn our budget hearing and take a five-minute break and we'll get into our general session meeting. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to open and amend the revenue and expenditure budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to receive and expand an additional twenty-three thousand twenty dollars in the tax increment financing fund and an additional two hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty dollars in the foundation enterprise fund. Authorizing the receipt of additional funds in the amounts mentioned from state, federal and local sources and to reconcile and expand the amounts to meet the requirements of state school law.
So moved. Second. Whatever you need.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So that was one and two? Okay. Action item number two, consideration to approve the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Same, uh, same item or different item, of course, but the consideration to approve the fiscal year twenty-six budget as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and adopt the general student activity tax increment financing debt service capital, local building authority, food services, enterprise revenue and expenditure budgets for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six as presented.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Action item passes. Okay, we're going to move, I meant to say this earlier, sorry. We're going to move action items twelve and thirteen. We're going to move action items twelve and thirteen up to three and four and push everything else down. And that is consideration to approve the medication administration policy by Aubrey Parks.
Is that a special gift to Aubrey?
Yes, it is.
That is a really nice gift.
Yes.
Thank you.
She has little babies at home.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. Just a proposal that we adopt some mild changes to the medication administration policy to be in compliance with Utah State Code and evidence-based practice.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the medication, are we doing both or just the one?
The one.
To approve the medication administration policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, okay. Consideration to approve the exclusion and readmission for infectious disease policy.
And again, similar in nature, just a proposal that we adopt some minor changes to be in compliance with evidence-based practice in Utah State Code regarding the exclusion and readmission for infectious disease policy.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the exclusion and readmission for infectious disease policy as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I've been forgetting the comments. Any questions or comments?
I'm just appreciative that we're being, we're actually taking advantage of the time now to make changes to this policy before things become an issue. We've already gone through that before in the past and so to be proactive in that, very appreciative of that, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And this will be, if parents had questions, they could watch our study session. The policy will be up on the webpage, right?
Yeah, and my phone line is also open through this, so I'm happy to answer questions.
And just if I remember right, you had said we're pretty much already practicing this. We're just changing the policy to be in line.
Correct.
Parents know, that's, it's what we've been doing, that's awesome.
Correct.
Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Action item passes.
Hey Aubrey, if you give me just a second, I, I'd like to, I'd like to say a few words and express my appreciation to Aubrey for all of the great things she's done in this district. And I want to just share the, a little story of back to COVID. And you know, the world still kind of revolves around COVID, it seems like. But as we found ourselves in the midst, midst of COVID and shutting down and, and we were so fortunate that we had a board that wanted to keep schools open and fought hard to do that. And we were also very fortunate that we had this, this brand new nurse that was pretty spunky and, and very knowledgeable and very helpful to get us through COVID. And as you, as you look at the number of days that we were able to stay in school and how that kind of really catapulted this district to the achievement status that we now, that we're now very proud of and that we now, you know, like to, like to brag about every once in a while. I, I think that Aubrey and her team had a lot to do with that. And, and they were so smart about how they went about things and advised us and helped us stay in school. And I think that, you know, Aubrey's come to this district and she's, she's had, she's kind of bought into the culture and I think she's brought it with her to have a great vision for what her job could be. Not just what it was, not just what she was asked to do, but she had the vision for these clinics at our schools, which really was going on almost nowhere and is now something that, you know, keeps our kids in school and allows principals and teachers to take some action that they otherwise couldn't have and, and really increased our, our attendance days and with kids that, that needed an aspirin and we didn't have to send them home over it. And, and she's had a great vision and she's been a great leader. And even though, you know, you might find her name somewhere in the support service category, like a lot of our support service employees, I hope that they see themselves as great educators because Aubrey is certainly a great educator. And this district would not look the way it does today without her influence, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, that's very kind. It, thank you.
I echo that. That's awesome because I remember during the COVID days, she personally endured a lot. And you persevered, you hung in there, so.
Well, we hope never to repeat that.
Way to stay strong.
We used to see you a lot, I thought for a while you were our superintendent.
I think I was just telling Kevin, well, one day I hope to not be known as the COVID lady. But it truly has been a, a great honor to work at a district that prioritizes the students, that allows my, my students, including my own children, to have an opportunity to stay in school, to learn, to have opportunities to seek the care that they need to be able to continue learning. So I really do appreciate it, it's an honor to work here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, Sean Kelly, I think you're going to get comfortable up here, huh? We have a few. Okay, let's see, number three, consideration to approve the Wasatch Education Support Professionals Employee Negotiations Agreement.
So in negotiations, as we sat around the table, once again, the, the feeling of the employees, you heard it today, I think that's a great testament to where we are in our morale and everything else. And tonight is no exception to that, I want to thank you as the HR director. You heard from some of our principals in public comment, I saved mine until I presented to you to tell you it makes a difference. And today, we opened custodian jobs and we had twenty-nine, we have twenty-nine applicants, which is great. Last time, I think it was two or three. And so it is making a difference. And tonight, the first one you're going to do would be a category that would fit with our custodians. It's the educational support professionals. And I won't read all of those, but the big five percent and the thousand dollars that the state is giving them is a big boost to them. So tonight, my recommendation is to have you approve the negotiations for the educational professionals as written.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Wasatch Education Support Professionals Employees Negotiations Agreement for fiscal year 2025 and 2026 as presented by Mr. Kelly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments?
So I just like to make a comment. People have made comments about the health insurance. So as someone who owned a business, I actually did very similar to what Wasatch did where I paid all the insurance for all my employees. I did that because I experienced a two-hundred-thousand-dollar event in my life. And when I did, I had a high deductible plan. We had to pay over twenty-thousand dollars out of pocket for something that was a catastrophic event and I wasn't in the position I was later in life. That was a big deal for me. And so for me, one of the reasons that the health insurance is such a, such an important thing is because when you have the ability to know that you can go to the doctor and you can have things taken care of and you can have those expenses cared for in the way that our insurance plan does in this district, it becomes really important. And it's, it's a way that teachers can know that they can be protected, and not just teachers, but everyone in the district, to know that they are protected through an insurance policy that, that allows them the flexibility to not have to dedicate so much extra income so that all those increases do go just to pay for healthcare. So I'm appreciative that we, we continue to be able to do that and I'm, I'm glad that we're able to do that. And, and I hope that people from a public perspective understand, I understand that's not the case for everybody. But that is something that is a really good benefit that we can offer our teachers to help recruit and retain the best. So hopefully, that is something that is understood.
Yeah, well said.
Thank you.
Thanks Brad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number four, consideration to approve the Wasatch Education Association Negotiations Agreement.
So again, in our negotiations and, and board member, you said very eloquently, I will tell you this is a recruiting tool to have insurance. When we go to job fairs, we tell people, that's one of our big things. You will have your insurance a hundred percent funded and it's great insurance and it does, it makes a big difference. It's a twenty-seven-thousand-dollar addition to what we're paying them. So it is a big boon and it is a recruiting tool. And I think tonight, you heard from our association president of how fast the people ratified the proposal. So again, thank you for that. In the, in the short time, our salaries have increased and it is making a huge difference. So tonight, I would recommend that we, that you, sorry, approve the employee license negotiations as written.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the licensed employees negotiations agreement for fiscal year 25, 26 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments?
I, I just want to point out that as we met with the different groups for negotiations, you know, they said, thanks for taking care of us. We, I mean, we're working our tells off to earn this. And so it builds morale, but I mean, this is being earned, the work that's being done in our district. And the teachers were like, I mean, they, they were so grateful, they were like, we are going to work our tells off to, to kind of like be worthy of this and they are worthy of this. They have done tremendous things for students and I know they'll continue to do so and I hope they feel appreciated because the people are, are most important in, you know, from students on up, asset in this district.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consideration to approve the Wasatch Supervisor Employee, Employees Negotiations Agreement.
So this agreement is, we have a, a few, Zach Bredsgaard being one, Darren Wilkins, Lynn Thornton. I think that's my only three now, are supervisors. And so we have them do their own, even though it's tailored to the support professionals, but they have their own little category and I met with them and talked to those three. Mr. Bredsgaard signed this, so today my recommendation is to approve the Supervisor Employee Negotiations Agreement as written.
I'd like to make a motion that we, sorry. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Supervisor Employees Negotiations Agreement for fiscal year 25, 26.
I'll second that. Any comments? Okay, motion passes, or all in favor, sorry. Aye. Now the motion passes. Okay, and the last one, consideration to approve the Administration Employees Negotiations.
Yeah, so again, a, a group of individuals that do so many things. We work closely with them at my level and they're, they do so many things, hard decisions. And they're, again, the leaders of our school and how the school goes is up to the principal, as we know. And our assistants and all the other administrative people that we have, district and pool and transportation and all those, all those places. Again, a very positive group who appreciate you guys so much in, in recognizing their efforts and their hard work. So tonight, my recommendation is to approve the Administrative Employee Negotiation Agreement as written.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Administrative Employees Negotiations Agreement for fiscal year 25, 26.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, thank you.
That it for me?
Yeah. Okay, Dustin Miller, consideration to approve purchase of IP phones.
Good evening, this is a continuation of what we met with my last action item for a new phone system. So we went out and got some bids for phones, for two-hundred-and-twenty phones about. And the recommendation is to approve the bid from Ring Central for that amount there on the screen, twenty-six thousand, six-twenty.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, bid for the IP phones, I, yeah, IP phones in the amount of twenty-six thousand, six-hundred and twenty dollars to Ring Central.
Is there a second? I will second. Comments?
Is there a reason why we selected, or why Ring Central was selected over IP phone market?
Yeah, the biggest reason for that is the phones will be pre-provisioned. So that'll save us anywhere from five to ten minutes per phone. So when we're in Ring Central and signing phones, it'll already be there, pre-populated. I figured that was justifiable with the amount of time it's going to take to, to get in those amount of phones. So that was, that was the main reason.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, let's see, Zach Bredsgaard, consideration to approve the MacBook buyback.
Thank you, bring this one back to you, we did this last month. But unfortunately, the vendor we approved last month backed out. He wasn't aware of the color discrepancy between the student devices and the admin devices and just said he couldn't match their, meet the price he gave us. So we went with the next person on the list, which could actually end up netting us more money just depending on the quality of, or the tier of the devices. So it's now my recommendation that we accept the quote, or the bid from Mac of all trades for the MacBook buyback for the devices from Wasatch High School.
So repeat it again, tell us again why the change?
So all the student devices, there's twenty-five-hundred student devices were silver in color and the admin devices were space gray, I believe. Space gray sells better, apparently. So he, he should have known, I mean, we gave him the serial numbers, but when, when he actually gave us the bid, he assumed they were all space gray for some reason. So after evaluating it again, he backed out. Which like I say, it may, it may work in our favor, right? You can see the pricing tier B and C's where ninety percent of our devices will be. If we hit more in the B tier, we're actually going to be bringing in more money than we would have with the other vendor.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bid change, so the other bid is now canceled, right? To Mac of all trades for the Mac buyback.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other comments or questions?
Have we ran this past them? Do they know the color?
Yes, he's very aware.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Okay, consideration to approve fencing at Wasatch High School baseball field.
Okay, so we, the baseball coach, along with boosters and athletic director and the principal have decided they want to move the outfield fence of the baseball field in twenty feet. It's one of the further fences in the state as far as the homerun fence goes. We have a pretty strong wind that blows up the canyon, so it makes hitting home runs pretty hard at our ballpark, so. And also to bring it in line with what the fence will be at Deer Creek High School when it's built. We want to move this in twenty feet. So that, we got two bids on this project. It's my recommendation we accept the bid, bid from Simpson Fence for eighteen thousand and ten dollars.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid for eighteen thousand, ten dollars with Simpson Fence.
Is there a second? I will second. Any questions or comments?
I have a question, so I know it had said that there was fundraising happening. So is this price, the district's price, or will the fundraising go towards that?
The fundraising will go towards this.
So there's a couple other costs besides the fans, like warning track material, some other things that we're going to work with the high school and the baseball program through their fundraising, the baseball auction, they will pay a portion of this. But I would guess that most of the district will be the eighteen thousand and they'll help us in other areas of the fence. Zach's crew is going to do some of the work too, we forgot to tell you that. We got the long bid on that.
We are, Mr. [inaudible].
This is the fencing where they might put a road, right, next to it? So is, this is better in the long run because of the road situation, you know?
Yeah.
And to confirm, this makes a homerun, the same at both high schools?
Yes, it does.
Well played.
Got to have it the same.
Agreed.
Okay, great, any other?
So if the baseball team doesn't do as well next year, just saying. It's not because. It's not because we have different players on the team.
It's the fencing.
Um, my question, so are both companies are either, is either company local?
Yeah.
Both are local?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any kind of warranty that comes with the fence?
I I honestly don't know the baseball coach got these bids for us, but I can tell you, Ryan Simpson with Simpson Fence has done work for the district for as long as I've worked here, and he'll come and fix anything we need whenever we need it. So whether it's an actual warranty, I'm I'm sure he has something, but I I don't have anything to tell you for sure.
And is the timeline through the summer? When is the completion?
Yeah, we've gotta get the the so- the grass removed first and then we'll get it in there as soon as we can after that. We're we're hoping by the.
I'm I'm sure both of these companies would would stand behind their work and.
Yeah, no, I know both of these companies and I'm I'm glad they're local. Okay.
I taught Ryan Simpson math in the eighth grade, so double check his. Glad you said it.
That's great. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, consideration to approve the contractor to refinish the nest floor at Wasatch High School.
Okay, so we have the original floor in the nest at the high school. It's now seventeen seventeen, how many seventeen years, I think we've been in there?
Fall of, fall of two thousand nine. Is it eight?
Eight, nine?
I can't believe it's been that long.
So however many years that is, I guess it's not quite as many.
Where's the math teacher?
First year there was oh nine.
So it's pretty old. Sixteen, so we'll say sixteen years. This is the original.
I don't know anything about this district.
This is the original finish?
Yes, this is the orig- we we put a new wet layer of wax substance on it every year, but still the original paint, the original stain, everything on the floor. So it's time to redo it. We we thought this would be a great time to do it, as Deer Creek will be getting a brand new floor. We want them to look as good as they can. So this this will be, I think we s- did we s- we sent them the rendering over, right? Did you guys get the rendering?
I don't wanna be difficult, but what about the uh the hundred year seal that's on the floor of the current basketball court? It will stay there. We're just putting this, we're not sanding down.
Oh, you mean the painted part?
The painted seal that was designed by uh, they don't, they don't want that on there. You can see that's the design they chose.
It might get overruled by the.
No, for real?
For real, that's the design that was approved right there of what they wanted.
I watched uh, I watched an old man from uh late construction lay on the floor with a paintbrush and he painted those uh hundred year seals on the floor. That seal was uh was designed by Ali Jarvis, who was a former soccer player and goalkeeper at Wasatch High. So, yeah, I'm a little disappointed, but uh we can.
We can work on it later.
Maybe we can find a place over there by the block W to paint that. I will tell you guys, this is an effort to modernize the floor and to make Deer Creek's floor and Wasatch's floor similar. It's gonna have the same look. It's gonna be a stain instead of a paint. It's an upgrade to what most of the schools are doing now. The high school admin and coaches worked through this design. And I'm sure the hundred year seal could be put over there by the block W and we can have.
We're in the other corner.
Yeah, we can cut it out.
Somewhere. The other corner I even like better. We'll work on that.
Yeah, there's still a few designed things to work out on. They weren't real fond of lettering on the nest. So we need to figure that out a little bit. His price, except was firm regardless of the bond. So yes, we'll we'll work with Mr. Bishop and. You can arm wrestle him.
We have different kind of wrestling.
So it's my recommendation that we accept the bid from Sweetwater or Sweetwood Floor Company for the amount of seventy one thousand, five hundred eighty two dollars and fifty cents to refinish the nest floor.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the bid for seventy one thousand, five eighty two and fifty cents for Sweetwater, Sweetwood Floor to refinish the Wasatch High School floor, nest floor.
So just so I understand, they're gonna go ahead and sand it.
Yes, this will be sanded down to bear wood and stained instead of painted. If you've ever been to Tempanogus Middle School, the gym there is all stained as well. So the the main area will be kind of a whitewash stain. The key's a silver grayish silver color. Is it gray? Can't remember what it is. It's not silver because that's Deer Creek, so it's not silver. It's similar, yeah. You'll like it, I promise. We had the best architect there is designing.
This may be the last thing he puts his finger.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further questions or comments?
And so did you just get one, only one bid came in?
Yeah, it was the only one we could get.
Okay.
Especially on our timeframe that we're we're trying to get it done over the summer.
This company does most of the work.
He's actually at South Summit right now.
And he's worked with us before.
Are they a Salt Lake company? Where are they from?
I.
I don't worry. Sure. Zach, what's the difference between or quality or la- or how long a life expectancy of paint versus uh stain?
The life expectancy will be the same cuz it's actually the the finish on the top that gives us the life ex- the lifespan of it. It's just a different look. It'll look more like natural wood instead of paint. So I mean, we should get another, sorry, another fifteen to twenty years out of it, I would expect.
They say you can sand those wood floors down maybe two or three times in their life, is what they used to say back when we were building that anyway.
So to be clear then, we've we've gone, it sounds like we've exceeded the life expectancy. If you're saying fifteen years and we've been in there sixteen, it's time. Yeah.
And you can, if you see it, the the stain's starting to kinda yellow or the finish on it starts to yellow.
Some of the paint's popped up a little bit. It it needs redo.
It needs it.
I I just hate to see those seals go, but I think it's a good idea that maybe we redo one in the corner.
I think we could probably cut that one out, just like we did with that W and put it, put it on a corner like that.
The W on the other side of the floor, just for new board members, um can you go back to that Stacy that shows the floor?
The pi- picture of the floor, then in the right, that top corner right there, that W is made from three different gymnasiums that were home to Wasatch High, two of them being at the high school on um, on Sixth South that we moved from. And then the the wood that actually makes up the W in the center came from the old gym at the original high school um on Main Street. So that wood and that original W there was would be wood that was that was uh manufactured and laid back in the you know, nineteen ten in that in that area, so.
It's awesome.
Yeah, I think it'd be good if we just cut the seal out, just how it is, and have them move it and cut it in the exact spot. It may have a little different tint to it because of the finish on it, but it'd make it look aged.
Hard to get out in the weeds, but I guess I will for a second. But how did someone know to keep wood from the original high school? So we had a, you know, Justin's kinda doing the same thing. He's kinda marrying this process and I I don't, I think, is one of or one of you on his legacy committee? Um, have you been going to the meeting? Justin's never invited me to one of the meetings. So for two years before we moved into the new Wasatch High School, we had a legacy committee made up of people from all around the community and um Laurie Laurie Winn was on that committee and uh who is a classmate of mine, class of eighty five and and her brother-in-law's grandfather had kept a bunch of this wood in his garage. Um, that's that was uh, if you know um Carrie and uh Paul.
Paul.
Um, it was Paul's dad or grandfather, one of the two that had that wood um that his grandfather had saved and uh kept it in his garage all these years. And so we used it in a few different places and and that's where that, that's where that wood came from. And the Lithgow brothers, um, they're the ones that stepped in and did all the carpentry work and we kinda caught it just in time. The wood was starting across the floor when we pulled this whole thing together and made it all work. And uh, another story I'll tell you quickly, if I may. Is uh, um, the Was- Wasatch won the state basketball tournament in nineteen forty five and there were two cousins on that team. Their last name was Murdoch. One of them was Kent Murdoch. Kent Murdoch started uh all these uh Chevrolet dealerships in the Salt Lake area. The Murdoch Chevrolet was hit started by him. Those are his grandsons that are running it. He was a three-sport athlete, not only at Wasatch High, but at Utah State University. And there was a scholarship for a number of years. I'm not sure if it's still there or not. It was called the Kent Murdoch Scholarship and we gave it to a three-sport athlete. Um, he had a cousin named Harvey Murdoch and Harvey Murdoch went on to be a really uh a a a top end NCAA football referee. And he actually wrote a book and uh kind of about his his uh his career and one day, not too long after we had moved into this school, one of the secretaries came back to my office and said, there's a Harvey Murdoch here to see you. And so as I walked out into the hall, I said, I said, is this the Harvey Murdoch? And uh and he looked about the right age and he looked at me and he said, well, I didn't know anybody who would would know my name here anymore and any longer. And I said, oh, no, we know all about you. And and I said, your your picture's in the in the alumni room, um, when you when you won the state tournament with with Harvey and the rest of those guys. So I took him. I took him down to that W and I have some pictures of him standing on it. And I told him the story. And as he stood there on that W on the gym that he played on when he was a a high school basketball player on the in the original high school on Main Street, the tears rolled down his face. And I thought, if this is indicative of, you know, what this means to this one man that we're made aware of, what a worthy project that it that it turned out to be. So, thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Now, the idea, and I hope they're still doing it, is that each each time our our team enters the the floor, they stand on that W. And the idea is that they remember those who have played before as they go out to compete on their own.
That's cool.
I love it.
Okay, let's see. Where are we? All in favor? Is that where we are? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Zach. Okay, one more.
Let's not get rid of that.
We won't.
No, um, as a matter of fact, going back, I I, you really need to oversee that.
We'll make sure it happens, don't worry.
Okay, consideration to approve asphalt maintenance.
Okay, so this is, I've already brought asphalt maintenance to you once for slurry seal. This is some patching that we need to do prior to slurry seal. This is mainly the road from Sixth South into West Campus, so along the tennis courts into the pool. It's in really bad shape, so this is just, they'll cut it out and re-asphalt it before they slurry it. Um, I only got the one bid from Morgan Pavement because they're the ones that we'd already approved to do it and they are on state contract. So he 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 does it cheaper for us cuz he'll be here anyways. So it is my recommendation that we approve the bid for asphalt maintenance for Morgan Pavement in the amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the asphalt maintenance for twenty thousand, seven hundred dollars to Morgan Pavement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
And is this the summer too, Zach?
Yes, this will be done probably the first or second week of July. They're gonna do the asphalt and then they wanna slurry shortly after that.
Okay, and I'm not always the best with directions, so tell me if I'm way off base, but i- if if the new road goes in, will it replace this or feed into it? How does this affect the new road they're talking about being put in?
It doesn't. This is, that road would be one hundred east roughly, and this is basically two hundred east.
Okay, so it's not gonna tear it back up and.
Well, that's my same question. I I thought this was the road that the city's talking about.
We like.
No? Okay.
You're talking about between the labrum Chevy Chevrolet and the baseball field?
No, like on on the West Campus side. I don't know. I just.
I don't, going between West Campus and the hotel is what we thought, right?
I think it's one hundred east.
Yeah, that's one hundred east.
Okay, so it doesn't.
They have talked about that for a long time, but uh the the school district will have, the the board will have a lot of control there as to whether or not you want a road that cuts through our campus right there. And then um, if so, how it's constructed. And so I know, I know there's been things said like, oh, you know, we've talked to the school district, we'll yeah, people, people may have uh have have said things to the school district, but there's never been any agreement. There's never been any there's never been anything said or promised by the school district regarding that road. Um, do I think a road could go through there? Um, you know, and and currently, so you know, the road that goes out to the crosswalk, the new crosswalk um is still owned by the school district. And I think that that road should be owned by the city. We can talk about that more to later time, but so there's there's a lot of things kind of in play there. And the current board has a clean slate as to how you handle that. There's no, there's been no promises made. And, you know, i- if we did decide at the end of the day, moving the fence in would maybe help that road have a little more room, but um, you know, there's other people, there's other property owners including the labrums and others that would that would also have to be involved here. And yeah, there's always, you know, I guess there's always eminent domain. I don't know if they can eminent domain another public uh entity or not.
I'll fight them.
But uh, if their if their worst case scenario is that, you know, an eight foot an eight foot tilted up fence like the one that that we have over at the other school. Um, we would, we would definitely want and we're going to want, even with the new hotel going down that other sidewalk, that's that's something that's gonna have to be addressed as well, that right now there's a fence and, you know, kids can't just flow through. They have to go down the sidewalk to the to the crosswalk. And we should, you know, we should make sure that whoever the developer is and and this is something we can reach out to Heber City on immediately and talk to them about, but that there's a fence, a new and improved fence along that sidewalk that keeps kids instead of cutting through parking lots and so on, which would be more dangerous for them walking down to the crosswalk.
Okay.
Yeah, that is one hundred east. This this is for two hundred east.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for the action items. We'll move on to board report, if anybody has anything.
I do.
Okay.
Just from uh, I appreciate everyone who came to the budget hearing and for the comments that were made. Um, and I I just wanted to address, it sounds like there's some rumors floating around that there's marble in the new high school and and that we're not being fiscally responsible. And I I just wanted to address that and and let people know we do treat this budget like it is our own money. And it is, we're a taxpayer, just like the rest of you. And we feel the crunch just just like you do. So the questions we're asking are because we're trying to make sure we're being careful with public money. So I just wanted to reassure people and also put that rumor to bed publicly is, no, we haven't gone over and above and put marble in. Right?
No marble.
Confirm that. No marble in the new high school.
We will. We're happy to compare our cost per square foot and the the history of building in this district uh up against the rest of the state any time.
Yep.
We'll always find that it's 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 within reason and and even lower. And those of you that were that were on the board when we toured the Salt Lake school schools and in downtown Salt Lake, they ha- they were m- they were finished with much higher um, much higher priced finish than than our current high school and any of our other schools. And so this whole notion, even that the current high school is this is is this uh overpriced finished school is fault. It's a hundred percent fault and and uh the current school would be finished very. and uh, the current school would be finished very similarly to the current high school.
Thank you, yeah, I just wanted to put that to bed and reassure people, we hear your concerns and we are trying to be fis- fiscally responsible and put that rumor to bed.
Thank you.
We're doing that.
I, I remember being on that tour and we had our architects with us over and over for you board members that weren't, weren't there, it was a few years ago, over and over he'd point out stuff and he'd be like, that's expensive, that's expensive, you know, that's expensive, over and over he'd point out things to us and, you know, to, to tell us we're not doing those type of things, so we really feel like what we're building is uh like superintendent said, we can put up against anybody and it's probably gonna be um, lower price per foot than, than the schools we've, we toured, so.
Oh, I think one of the most expensive ones that we toured um had a three D printed wall. There.
Yeah.
Do you remember that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Three D printed wall. Yep.
Our, our schools are built out of material that will last a long time and our schools are built to last, they won't last a very long time in this valley, they will stand the test of time, but they uh, they are built within reason and with a public money um viewpoint in mind.
Um, I have something to say, I, I realized when Paul was telling this story, is this your last meeting?
This is it.
It hit me, I didn't.
You won't be here, I'll be here, but I won't be sitting in this chair.
This is the last time he's sitting in this chair and I, it did not hit me until he was telling this story and I'm like, I'm gonna miss his stories and it hit me, like wait, this is the last time he's sitting in this chair. So, I don't know, should we? I, it just hit me.
We'll have him at the Aug- August meeting and.
Yeah.
And pay a proper tribute to him.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's fine, it's a, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about that, we'll have other opportunities and I've already had lots of good um, good um exchanges with, with folks and goodbyes and um I don't know if the whole board is aware that you've offered to, to allow me to address the teachers at the opening day, which I'll still be working here at the district and do kind of a proper handoff to Mr. Peterson and and uh, that might be one of the, you know, one of the last times, but, but yes, this will be my last.
In the chair, but you'll be here for
Yes.
The August meeting, yeah.
But not only agenda, it's a celebration, like we've done the last celebration of people and it'll be the celebration of Superintendent Paul Swett, and you did it in front, and we give
Okay.
About opportunity to have.
I would like to do that at the August meeting if everybody, yeah.
Just share something with you guys, you might remember this, but when we interviewed Garrick for the superintendent position, I asked him, I said, what's the one thing you wish you could take from Superintendent Swett? And he said, I wish I could take the history he knew about this district. And in perfect form, he, he once again shared a story with us tonight, it was, was very touching and uh, I appreciated, appreciated him sharing that with us, so we'll, we'll miss that. We'll, we'll miss that, that personal touch that you know um, so much about our district and, and you're kind of a historian of it, so if we ever need something, we're gonna call you back.
Please do, please do.
You can fill us in on something, so.
So Alice Hickin has another uh, history project for us and she needs a little committee.
Sounds good.
Hey, just so you know, I'm working with them about twice.
She's got another project for us. Uh-huh. No, it's a good one.
Cabinet is moving forward. Zach's crew is gonna put concrete out here by the rock and we've got the logs identified. CAP students identified the logs out on site. We're ready to bring them down when the concrete is poured, we'll reassemble the logs. We'll have somebody come and chink it, they've got a fundraiser going to put the roof on and shake shingle it and so the cabinet is moving forward.
That's great, that's exciting.
We're doing our best, take care of them.
Okay, well, we have another one right behind it, it's, it's easy.
Just a little bit till the cabinet is finished.
It's not a hard one, but.
Okay, I'm willing.
Okay, anybody else?
I would just say, I know not everyone watches study session and the board meeting and I've uh, had a lot of people ask what about boundaries, have they been decided, so I would just direct anyone wondering about boundary updates, please watch the study session for tonight because we did talk about the survey results and next steps, so I would just direct them there.
Okay, superintendent, final words.
So I wanna, I would like to finish um talking about uh a little bit about my beliefs on leadership. And uh, I hope you'll just allow me a few minutes to, to kinda talk this through with, with you and whoever might be listening, um. Our, our theme, um, most, most specifically with our leadership team this year, all our principals and district leaders and so on, um, has been love, service and gratitude. And uh, I wanna, I wanna just talk about that a little bit, we talk about transformational leadership versus transactional leadership. And uh, as the years have gone by and as I've been able to, to be in leadership positions for a good part of of my thirty-four year career, um, it's very evident to me that uh, leading with uh, leading with love, loving those people that uh, that you lead to begin with, if you start with love and you let them know that you care about them and that you love them and that you're not afraid to say it, is uh extremely powerful. And it's more powerful than any transactional or motivation, trying to motivate people with a policy or a stick or whatever you wanna call it. Leading on the other end with love will, will outdo that stuff a hundred times. And so, I think that sometimes we felt like we, you know, we might lead a certain way outside of our jobs and, and and rather it be um with our families or or uh, in it, it, our, our churches that we go to or whatever it might be, but I'm telling you that that I've found in my professional career as a leader and no one should ever think when I'm talking about love, service and gratitude, no one should ever think that, that, that that means you're a weak leader or that you would allow um, things to go on that are subpar or um not up to what the standard is, cause that's every once in a while we, we have a little bit of a saying around here, if we have to, we'll get transactional on you in a hurry. But we don't want to go there and we very seldom go there because we, we lead with love and next comes service. And I would say to you that our leaders in this district are the hardest working leaders you will find anywhere because they're not giving orders and telling people what to do as much as they're jumping in and they're leading by example. And they're outworking and working just as hard as the people that they lead. And then we kinda finish that up with gratitude. Um, we talk a lot about and, and it, it's been my, it's been my hope that, that I've been able to help all of the leaders in this district understand the best way to start your day is to list those things in your head, either, either just mentally or write them down that you're grateful for. And if we get up in the morning and we take a moment to um, be grateful for what we have, your day's gonna go much differently and, and you know, these three, these three are, are interchangeable, there's no real special order to them. But uh, I, I think that uh being a transformational leader is best, is best accomplished um with love, service and gratitude and if that's my last word here as to advice for anybody in this district, because I think every person is a leader. We talked about Aubrey being a leader from her chair as, as the school nurse and our custodians being leaders and, and our aides being leaders in the classroom and our students being leaders um in everything that they do, um being a leader is an attitude. It, it's not a title, it's not something that, that uh, that somebody gives to you, it's, it's how you act and it's how you behave and we can all be leaders and, and uh, as we're focused on being leaders and leading others, to me, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good stuff packed into this little package of love, service, gratitude. And I would, I would love for that to be my, my final word.
Thank you.
I'd just maybe say that I, I started my transition from the school counseling office to leadership in two thousand six. And um, as an assistant principal at Wasatch High School and Paul Swett was the principal. And since that time, um, while he hasn't always been my direct supervisor, I've worked really closely with superintendent and he, he has never, those are just words to, to Paul Swett. He has never interacted with me, never, in a way contrary to that. And I, I know that all of us could say the same sort of thing and that's why he is revered in this district by those who work closest with him. Um, because um, it doesn't matter, I mean, he would be the first one any of us would call if we were in a, in a bind. And so anyway, I just wanted to add my sort of witness about, about Paul's belief and practice of that and that, as much as anything we've done, is the reason this district is the best place to work.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will go ahead and um, let's see, move into executive session. So we'll adjourn our meeting and move into executive session. Sorry, that just hit me that it's his last time in the seat. I was not ready for that.
Sounds good.
Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn? And wait, I'm
Nope.
I'm jumbled. Okay, motion to adjourn so that we can move into executive session where we'll talk about property, um, personnel, property and personnel, we'll leave it there. According to section fifty-two, four or five of the Open Meetings Act.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, meeting adjourned.
Hey, you tell Justin to get hold of me.